Okay, all set team? First, please join me for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just.
Okay, welcome to everybody here and out there. This is the October 25th meeting of the County Planetical Planning Board. We have some new faces here, so I will introduce the folks at the dice. At my far right is Kim Burcker, she's our remote facility coordinator and our access coordinator. And next to Kim is John Revitella, our secretary. The board members include Mark Talbert, Scott Neal, Amanda Van Lincoln, of course, I'm Chuck Euler, our town planner. Shawna Boncheck is here, as well as our town engineer Lance Preban, representing the MRB group. And is Chris remote or not at all?
Chris is not at all.
So our board attorney is excuse this evening. So we fly without attorney. Okay. For your people that are here, real quick, our procedure is pretty basic. We'll follow the agenda as published. When we get to an item on the agenda that you are involved with, if you're the presenter, please come to the podium, give us your name and address. Make your presentation. That will be then followed by any questions or comments from the board. I will then open it up to the public, anyone who has any comments from the public itself, they can comment, it will then come back to the board for review. We will then take action on the bigger application and that will constitute our involvement. Is anything else already in the protocol? So, all that being said, I first have to point out to you folks that are here that we have emergency exits to our right and left, should there be a need to leave the room. Please go in that, either one of those directions. First thing I'll do is approach to the floor. If anyone's here that would like to address the board regarding an issue or item that's not on the agenda, now's the time to do so. If that's the case, please come to the podium and give your name and address. Anyone here for approval to the floor? Not? We'll move on to our published agenda. We have a couple of public hearings tonight. I should, for the record, note that the hearings were published in the Daily Messenger on October 19th. So we are legal in that regard. And that being said, let's move on to two continued site plans that we have. One is from Mahor Engineering. Anthony Tintera, project engineer, representing Brian and Angie Jocelyn. Thermo Sahaya and also Lisa Roberts and Larry Jocelyn of Las Vegas, Nevada, owners of property 3611 County Route 16, requesting a single-stage site plan approval for a tear-down and rebuild of a single-family home with a rated extension of the distance travel.
It is.
That was taken away. I thought that was taken off. Last time since the driving. Well, they want to tear down or rebuild the home, so let's, let's leave it at that, maximum square footage is about 2750 square feet. It was continued to tonight. We were looking for information from Mr. Tintera, which I think some of it came in very late today.
In some of it, we haven't yet.
And there was other information regarding primarily the landscape, if you recall. I think we had asked for better definition of compliance with the shoreline guidelines. We had asked for a detailed landscape plan showing a tree schedule as to what was to be planted. I think we've got today a rendering just showing some bushes along the back. No definition as to the size and type of bushes and it's rather sketchy, to say the least. So again, we're looking for something more from the applicant. And I guess we have in front of us a continued resolution. Continuation resolution for the, for the project, for the Jocelyn project. And I think we're looking at November 9th is the next meeting. So if I have no objection, someone want to give me a motion to continue review of this site plan to November 9th.
So moved.
Second, the motion is second to continue discussion to November 9th. The discussion in favor? Okay. We also have CPN 22051, Amerifond Engineering. It's just verification, this is the Shepherd and Burke property that's sort of been hanging on for the last couple of months. They are going to the ZBA on the 15th of November for their appeal on the street setback. And assuming they get that variance, we would then discuss it on our meeting on 22nd. I think that the continuation is made. So just for everyone's information, we will revisit that application on the 22nd of November. Okay. Let's move on to our new public hearings. The first one is CPN 22066, Robert Sloan, the third owner of property 21 Riser Road, requesting a single-stage subdivision, the subdivision of 10 acre parcel. Three, two lots, one of 7.677 acres, the other lot being 2.323 acres. And I see Mr. Sloan, I recognize your smiling face. So if you'd like to come up and tell us what you're going to do at the property.
Sure. The idea is to subdivide and the 2.3 or 2.4 acres will become home for our daughter and her family. And they're going to build a and pole barn. So it's kind of planned at the moment, nothing firm yet, there's like someone in law with me. So we're going to come up with the plans, we'll be engineering. First step is subdivided so that they can live next to us and see the grandkids run across the backyard.
It's a great feeling to have the kids run across the back.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to this.
Okay, it's fairly simple board. Any questions, concerns?
Just one little question, just on the back level pocket there in lot one that, that you'll keep. And it's really, I don't really care, but just a consideration as to why, maybe if you thought about extending the lot to all the way from end to end, I mean, it doesn't, I'm just.
You taking that lot all the way back?
Right, right.
There wasn't much usable back there. When you walk in, it's all woods and wetland. Never be any. You could easily have been taken back there, but they were saying.
I have no recommendation.
I was walking with the surveyors, they said, well, that would probably be the best idea.
Yeah.
So I figured the surveyors knew more than I did.
Sean or Lance, more a question for you, and several of the publicly available maps, it shows up as a historic district. And I hadn't seen that before. It's definitely like the publicly available when you do like. It does not show an encore, and that's why I was asking.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I haven't, I don't really, yeah.
That was a surprise.
This does come up on online, you're right, yeah, and in fact, when I order something for my house, and it'll say historic district.
I'm not aware of a designation that the town has adopted for any area, I do know that the ship will crisp website that we have to process through, but that's different.
I think the only other observation that comes into play when you design one is that you're going to do that. Current, the current lot, I'm sure it's 57% more than our was, 5% more than. With that, because we consider natural resource inventory, it's just something to take into consideration, or whatever your plans are for.
The plans are to not cut any trees. That's the plan, they're too beautiful. And there's enough space in the lot for a home in Bull Barn. So it's nice being surrounded by all those trees, it's very private there, and certainly a lot of wildlife. Both affiliated woodpeckers. It's a good problem to have.
Did the type, part one of the seeker show a historic? Didn't reference it. And you don't need a ship.
I've seen it before, I'm available to you, I just can't. No designation.
Usually jumps up there before jump.
Yeah, I was really surprised.
Did mention there's some wetlands in the back end. Have you labeled those wetlands at all, shown them? Lineated, I think Sean's termination set it is.
There's one yet.
Yeah, that line, and there's something written somewhere.
Yeah, it says national. It does show ZMI, shock right below, elevation 734.
Okay.
I think it's all part of that paddle for.
The green.
Okay.
Is that where it's getting picked up? That's, that's why that historical thing is coming up, because it's in the middle.
It's conservative though.
I mean, we, we created it.
It's a designation.
There's also a designation of the class.
Okay, board, anything else? No? We did send it out to some other third parties who reviews. Got new comments back from Chris Johnson. We did not have to send it to Tegu County Plane Board. You showed the driveway of the patient lot two, is the intent to use that?
The existing driveway.
Existing driveway for the, for the new lot? All right. Okay, let's move on. We do have a seeker resolution, and it is an illicit action, so let's think that separately. Someone wants to give me a motion to act on the seeker, accepted.
I'll make the motion to the seeker, illicit action for CPN 22-066 at 2100. Risk, how do you say? Riser, Riser Road.
On second. I'm going to motion second, part two has been completed. And part three by MRB. Motion second, and for discussion in favor. Motion carries to move on to the subdivision.
The single-stage subdivision approval for 22-066, 2100 Riser Road with four conditions listed, and I believe no additional. Just very standard ones here in your.
And I'll second them all. Okay, motion second. We set aside the part in the subdivision. Well, I know, I know.
We've mentioned it for subdivisions, but it gets attached to the site plan, that's when it gets acted on. So I just put it on subdivision.
And out in this zoning district, will we see site plans?
You absolutely will.
Okay. So you'll be back to see us when you come up with your plans for the. Okay, I motion second, all in favor? Okay, we'll see you back again when you're ready to build. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I didn't, John, I did ask the public.
I heard.
And I open, close the area. And I am going to open the area for Robert DiAcquisto, owner of property of 1940 New Michigan Road, requesting a special use permit for a major home occupation. He proposed to use the property to fulfill the DMV requirement of having a physical location operated internet car sales using a small section of a barn that meets the requirements while also not violating town laws or codes. Goodness, all business will be conducted online and vehicles will not be on the exterior display of the property. DiAcquisto, is he? He's online?
We're, we're here, yes.
Good evening. I, I think you, you filled out a statement of operations, you filled out responses to our special use permit conditions for major home occupation. Correct. I think you did most of your homework. Anything you'd like to bring to the board's attention at this point regarding your operation?
Um, not on our end, you guys were very thorough and very helpful with everything that we were, we had questions on before. Shawna, again, thank you for that, and if you guys have any questions for us, we're, we're here.
Okay. Did everyone see the statement of operations and his responses to the questions regarding compliance with the issues of special use permit? There is no site plan, I know. I mean, there's, there's nothing being approved here, so I know we always go through a special use permits that there should be a site plan. And I think we talked about a PRC that that's a requirement to, obviously you would answer a waiver.
Well, she did submit a waiver request.
Okay.
Yeah. That wasn't.
So we will.
Yes, he submitted that on September 16th.
Good. And so do we have a site plan approval as part of this or not?
So in your special use permit resolution, one of the whereas is identifies that the applicant requests the waiver from professional very safe plan, and then I assume the board would grant the waiver, but if not, now they're option, other option would be you can continue to come back for the site plan for the board.
I just want to make sure we got, but it covered that we don't start a precedent of not at least considering the site plan as part of the special use. Okay. Let's, board has any questions? Anybody in the public like to address the board regarding this application? Okay, let's move ahead.
Just one quick question, is there, are there any signage requirements for the dealership?
So the DMV asks that there's like a a sign about this big that shows a dealer number somewhere within the facility, which we were planning on putting inside the barn in the back, it's not going to be something that's publicly shown.
So no exterior signage?
No exterior signage, it's going to look just like a house.
Okay. Look no different than it looks today, right?
You got it. It's too nice out here to change it.
Okay, let's do a type two seeker, we'll make a bundle type two as well as the interest of special use permit.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in your findings, I'm going to put on my Chris Nadler hat, there is a statement in the code that requires us, boards, to go through and identify findings as to why we're authorizing potentially the approval of special use permit. And then so in summary, in your findings that were presented to you, says the major home occupation must be fairly transparent and obstructive. The standard fairly transparent and obstructive requires that the non-residential character of the home occupation shall not be apparent to the planning board. The planning board shall consider the following standards when making this determination. One, noise. The board must find that noise produced by the major home occupation is not likely to create any potential significant adverse impact upon the adjacent neighborhood. And that the type of noise and times of day of the noise generation are not inconsistent with the primary residential use of the premise and adjacent neighborhood. So board agree that this is not.
Yeah. Yeah.
The second one was pedestrian traffic, the board must find that the major home occupation is not likely to produce more pedestrian traffic to and from said premises that would exist in the case of residence without a major home occupation, and that the timing of such traffic is not inconsistent with the traffic likely to be generated by the primary residential use.
No impact or change.
Um, the third one was vehicle traffic, the board must find that the board finds that the major home occupation is not likely to produce significant, significantly more vehicle traffic to and from said premises than would exist in the case of the residence without a major home occupation, and that the timing of such traffic is not inconsistent with the primary residential use.
May I agree with that or not agree?
The fourth one is parking, the board was fine with the major home occupation does not create a need for more than three additional off-street parking spaces. In addition, such off-street parking spaces shall not be provided on the lot in such a manner as to create the backing of vehicles onto a public highway. Furthermore, such off-street parking spaces shall be adequately landscaped so as to provide a visual buffer between the parking spaces and adjacent properties of public right of ways. Think in this case, I don't believe there's a need for additional parking other than what's currently there, therefore not requiring additional landscaping to provide it. All right, next one is lighting, the board must find that the major home occupation does not create light trespasses onto adjacent properties or public right of ways, which would inconsistent with the town's lighting things, I don't believe this application has any additional lighting than what's already there. Okay, next one is aesthetics, if any changes proposed to the exterior of the building, the board must find that the change will not materially alter a characteristic architectural feature of the building such as fascia, window style, or roof line.
Correct.
No change.
Next one is trash, the board must find that the major home occupation does not create additional waste products that are not properly contained within receptacles normally associated with the principal residential use of the premises, where there is found to be additional waste products associated with the major home occupation that cannot be stored within such receptacles, and there must be a provision for adequately securing such waste products within a screen and landscape facility. Such a facility should be located behind the principal dwelling unit or behind the accessory structure used for the major home occupation, it must be effectively screened from adjacent properties and the public right of way. I don't think there's any, there's no waste, no change. Last, exterior display, the board was fine that the major home occupation does not involve exterior display or storage of goods, materials, equipment, or inventory.
That's no.
Those are the findings.
Yeah, the applicant filled that out. I think, I thought we were just condoning what he, accepting what he filled out.
I think that you would have been fine doing that, but I was, I just wanted to make sure I didn't get yelled at by Chris for not at least going.
And it was refreshing to see the applicant actually answer the questions.
Yes.
So for the record, make sure we include, John, that the applicant had you can reference it. You got our response, you got the applicant's response, I think we agree with the applicant's response that they need. Essentially what we're, we were looking for. Okay, are we ready to vote?
Did I get the motion for the?
No, no motion.
No motion, type two and special use permit.
You're going to bundle them?
Yes. I'll make the bundle for a secret resolution type two action and especially use permit approval resolution for approval of CPN 22-070 at 1940 New Michigan Road, the AR2 zoning district for a major home occupation.
In this four conditions, a waiver from the special fair safe plan.
Correct. One second. Okay, so the motion is second for discussion, all in favor? Good luck, fellas.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Okay. We want to, our new site plans for the season. First one, CPN 22073, group of engineering chair Phil Grove down in Naples, representing Easton Parish, 6240 Gooddale Road. They go on a property, yet to be determined the dress on Fox Road. Requested a single-stage site plan approval for the construction of a single-family homes on an acre parcel. This was part of the Q and. Mr. Grove, good evening.
Good evening. It's been a minute since I was here, so the basis on the board have changed, but I'm sure it's, it's all good. So I'm here tonight with the parishes, we looked at build a house, a single-family residence on the acre parcel. It's primarily agricultural fields, or it was. We here go by and see that it's, it's just a field now on the corn is to the south. We lot two, so everything south of that is a cornfield now. It's a pretty simple, straightforward construction site, I feel. I did get the comments from Lance late last week and rushed to try to address them and give you a revised plan. So the plan that you see on the board is the revised plan. What I added was there was a small area of wetlands in this corner. It makes sense. So federal wetland. If we're sufficiently far away from that, some other minor revisions that I made as a result of them are these comments. The only thing that we're missing at this point may be the Chicago sign off for the archeological. Something was approved by a candidate with watershed. And it's going to be served by town water. Yes.
I may add one question. Either one, why 18 foot driveway? I mean, is that your choice, or is it just a big driveway? Our standard is 12 men.
Did you request that, or did I?
No, I'm not sure why. Because I was thinking maybe it was for fire department, but it's not long enough for a fire department at all, so. I just wanted to bring it up for you all, because it's a more expensive.
I don't know if that, was that part of the subdivision approval?
No.
That wasn't, okay. Well, I think 12 is the more appropriate number.
I would. That's a lot of gravel. You do have, I think, the baby now at the right away. You show that.
Just looking typical driveway apron detail. Shows a driveway with various with a 13 foot.
I think our coach 12.
I'll check that detail out, since we did the details, both, both, like I said, and even.
Okay. Well, thanks, questions from Mr. Grove, the parishes at all? Lisa, it's in your letter, I don't remember anything, any issue, I know Bill said he responded to your letter.
Yeah, so MRB group did issue a letter late last week, Mr. Grove did provide revised plans. I did review those plans, I have our comments, for the most part, I've been addressed. I don't have anything major in our letter then, I don't have anything major now, solution.
We're close on the one acre of the servants, but what I ended up doing was pulling the the proposed construction staging area into the hooker of the driveway. So we were flying, we picked some up.
I mean, I think we were just made to make sure that was identified. We were trying to take some of that. I mean, I think we were just made make sure that was identified.
Can't remember on the Q and subdivision, were there any uh? There were what was in fact. Okay, you're not even going near that. The thing is, I know we're at up at P R C uh, was that with the Q and approval, there was a condition that the no further subdivision of the.
Sorry, actually on there.
Well, is it? Okay. Okay, so you carried that over to the segment. Can't find anything though. Chris Jensen, no comments. What are your comments? Our company, no comments. Now you talked about Tyler regarding the septic system of M R B. Didn't have to get anything from the county planning. Anyone from the public uh, like to ask a question regarding this application? If not, we'll move on to uh, action. Again, it's a type two, so we'll take the type two and the site plan together. Someone that's gonna make a motion.
I will move to accept the seeker. It is a type two bundled with the site plan with.
There is. There's total of nine shown. But but I think four should get removed as Kenley Lake Watershed has already issued their approval. I think uh, six coenforcement officer has no comments. And seven highway superintendent has no comments. So those three would be my suggestions. So that would leave one, two, three, four, five. What's the sixth?
So six, six conditions this much. Yeah, motion of second. Six conditions for the seeker as well as the state's lake plan for discussion. All in favor? Alright. It's the site plan is from Venetia surveyors uh, representing Gerber Homes. And regarding a property yet to be addressed, Foster Road. I requesting a single-stage site plan approval for the construction of a single-family home. Uh, Rocco Veneti representing the applicant. Rocco, you have the floor.
Good evening, folks. So, so this is a project, uh, we we were before you about six months ago, more than likely, I think maybe a little longer, but uh, we had this lot and then the middle of the property and then a lot on the other side. So we're, we're trying to build a home on this lot now. With, you know, the home is set back a little bit further than a setback from the highway. It's fairly centered on a lot. It's a, it's a, it's a forested lot. It's um, it's got quite a few trees, but a lot of brush. Which we intended to this week um, this weekend and go in and do some some uh, hydroaxing, not, not anything more than three or four inches, but to kind of clean it up so we can kind of preserve the trees and position the house to minimize the destruction of trees. Everything straightforward or sewer water out front, gas, electric. So the utilities are all, you know, at the road. Driveway comes in, hooks into the garage, which is on the left side of the house, the west side. And um, we kind of fit it into contours and we're gonna use dry well for um, for the stormwater management. And we did get Lance's letter. I don't see a showstopper anywhere in that letter. Uh, we certainly can, if we can make that a condition of approval, I would appreciate it. We can move forward. That's pretty much what I have to say for now.
Okay. Board of members, any comments, questions?
Rocco, just to confirm, you're using that driveway that's still that's there now? That entrance?
Yeah. Wha- what about it?
You're using that one. You're not making another one, right?
No, there's a driveway there that goes into that barn, but we're making a new driveway to this house.
But there was another one there to the north. I saw last yesterday.
Another what?
Driveway access. I mean, to the west, to the, well, yeah, I mean, I west, yeah.
Well, to the west, we don't own it.
No, there was on the property, but okay. There was already one there. That's what I was looking at.
Just to comment, what's our sign position? So when we give a zero, 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 you know, I'm relatively near the Canada egg, but so I'm in the car with this and going, okay, so I want Foster Road, there should be a sign.
Yeah, so I mean, that's on the applicant to do and we asked them to send a picture of it on the lot, but.
The other ones have, it's just easier again when there's no number specific, the other ones aren't hard to find because they're nailed backs and so forth, but you know, I figured it out, obviously.
Rocco, did you have a, did you have a chance to review the E C B comments? They'd asked for a request to shift the house twenty feet closer to the roof.
Yeah, but you know, we, we actually where we are, we're saving trees because we're gonna save trees in the front yard. I, I, I guess to me it seems to me that no matter where you put the house, it doesn't really matter, correct?
There wasn't too many really nice trees on that lot that I looked at. There's a lot of, like you said, brush and sprouts.
They, they want to set it back because a lot of the houses to the west are set back further, so they don't want to put it too far out front, you know?
I agree.
And then, and then preserve trees in the front yard to kind of shadow, you know, to kind of shadow the house a little bit if we can. That's, that's the goal. We certainly don't want to take down any more trees than we have to. And I'm cognizant and aware and sensitive to the, to the, to the E C B's comments. My wife's on the board, so I have to be sensitive to it. Or else, or else I won't get dinner.
Hey, Rocco, the, the plans show that neighboring building.
Yeah, we're gonna take it down, but I'm just gonna remove it from the drawing so that it.
No, no, you're fine. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was just saying it's, it's separate from this application, right?
You had a comment on that and I, and I understand it. It's one of your comments and we'll certainly remove the no.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I know the E C B also talked about the crown bitch, uh, nation species of something I can't pull it up at the E C B meeting and uh, could you come up with a different species rather than the crown bitch? Rocco, for your ground cover? Something that's native.
Say that again? I'm sorry, I missed it, Chuck.
I'll let, I'll let Kim describe it. It was Kim's suggestion, yes.
Uh, in the site plan, it had mentioned in your seeding for erosion and on the, the land that you were going to use crown batch along with bri, crown batches.
Crown batch, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
It could have been a, just a boilerplate note that you had.
It, it is a boilerplate note. I can, I can revise that.
Revise that, please, so we can make better conditions. Being a, a resident of Foster Road, I, I, I'm okay with the location. Uh, yeah, I wouldn't want it sitting out further than the homes to the west. And there is a potential, maybe saving a couple, couple trees in the front yard there. But uh, I'm, I'm happy with the location where it is. Any whales on the boards? Uh, Rocco, your zoning chart uh, through everybody.
I understand.
That threw everybody for a loop, I think. Uh, so yeah, clean that up. And I think that was uh, in Lance's letter, right?
Yeah, it's one of his condition. One of his comments.
It's in his letter, so just Lance, just make sure you check that it's got the right square footage and the right setbacks. Any, I think we already, we talked about any natural resource inventory uh, features on this property. I guess it would be hardwoods or schroth, scrubs. If, if you go in there, I think we talked about a P R C possibly saving any, trying, trying to save anything that's not within the footprint of the building. It's uh, of six inches or larger. Uh, and I think you sort of.
That, that's the intention of Gerber Homes and a new buyer, so.
Okay. Chris Jensen had no comments. Though he and Jim were having trouble trying to read the plans, so I guess uh, something about the, they were missing on the, off the network. Jim had the same.
That's when we were moving things around.
We had trouble with that.
We had a bunch of trouble with that.
Okay, well, uh, assuming Jim has no comments other than, I guess you're hot to bore under Foster Road, right? To get to the sewer?
Correct.
And you, you got a, a list station, you gotta pump up to that clean out on the edge of the road. Is that, you just can't get gravity, huh?
No.
Okay.
Kenley Lake Watershed, they'll look at that last part of their view of the sector.
We, we have to get a permit from them.
No comments from the fire. We did the, we did see the house elevations from Gerber. Looks like a nice home. So uh, that would be good. The driveway covert. You had mentioned about the compliance glance with the standards as far as our coverts and the rip wrapping. You decided the, the outfall.
Yeah, we got all that in the comment letter.
Okay. I'm gonna be watching.
I know.
County didn't have no, no response. Anything else, boy?
If I may, again, like the previous application, I think you could probably remove condition six and seven, which refers to coenforcement officer comments and highway comments. Unless the board would prefer to keep in mind that.
I would prefer Jim stay in there because I don't think Jim got a good look at it. Portion, I mean, he's gonna look at the building plan, so that's, he's gonna be involved with the plan, so. You can take uh,
Just take, remove the one.
Take Chris's out, number six. Okay, once again, a type two seeker combined with a single-stage site plan. Somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion. Make the motion that we approve CPN two-two zero seven four for the combined seeker resolution, resolution type two actions on as well as the
Okay. Motion mark second from Scott. Through discussion.
The one that's not listed is the C.
Alright, then a motion second. All favor. Thanks, Rocco.
Hey, while I got the chance, I'd like to invite you all to go up to, if you haven't already, go up to Fox Ridge, La Crosse is all seeded lawns are coming up and um Lake Breeze Way is all seeded lawns and it's all paved and turnarounds in. It really looks good and I thank you for your help on that project because it turned out nice.
And we are officially done, right? No, no more Fox Ridge, no more Fox Ridge, please.
But I, but I think you should take the opportunity to go up there and look at it because it really turned out nice.
I, I will.
Go knock on Anthony's door.
Yeah, go uh, is Anthony having an open house?
He, he told me not to speak for him, so.
Or we can have a block party.
I mean, thanks, folks.
Thanks. Alright, uh, moving ahead with the agenda. Let's get a motion for the minutes. So all in favor? Oh, second. I knew somebody. Nice job, John, as usual. Short timer. Security releases. We've got two. Got one from uh, Tervalo for thirty-seven forty-three across. And let's do that one first.
Just before you, I may have a C P N number wrong.
I know we talked about this before. I asked them, we stopped dropping these on us before we get a chance to review them or tell us that we don't need to.
Okay. Agree, uh, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, so we generally get them, I mean, you get them when they come in. So if you want us to wait and put them on a different agenda, we can do that.
Make sure I understand. I think.
I would much prefer that you tell us that we don't need to review them.
Like this, like this type of surety, in my opinion, is it one I don't want to speak on your behalf and tell you what you need, nothing. This isn't one that I would render. This is our standard um, small residential site planned that had soil erosion elements in place during destruction. They've since issued a building permit. Those erosion elements have been removed and signed off by your coenforcement officer.
So most of them were like a thousand to fifteen.
Yeah, those are the, those ones don't even come to us for review. They get done internally and they're done.
We had this. What meeting did we talk about? They were trusting town officers.
Right.
Inspectors.
Right, to do, to verify that. The bigger ones do, I think, require some input on the board because like a phased project like Fox Ridge or something where they're incremental releases along the way. Maybe you've encountered an issue on site, maybe staff has, there's some dialogue associated.
But they, they're not coming to us until everybody else has looked at it and approved it.
Every time.
Every time.
No, we're the final, everyone else, it wouldn't come here.
Yeah, this is signed by Chris Jensen, signed by Jim Fletcher, uh, now signed by me if we approve it and then the signature is.
But I understand what Mark was.
It's more like about sort of.
Alright, so maybe, because we do get them, I think maybe what is being asked, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, is that when we do get these and we add them to the agenda, they can simply say that this is.
We could give you the heads up.
That this is not either.
So that if I'm out running around, I can do it or send you what the document that he has in front of him that shows that they signed off on it. And we'll give that to.
So I would ask that question is, are, do we have a responsibility to go relook at everything that's already been looked at? No.
I don't.
I don't think so. And there's no need for us to go and look. What our, our requirement is to understand that it's already been reviewed by the board members prior to us and then final approval. And we're not needed. We are the final, whatever your
whatever we're expected for this board, I think staff, I'm not speaking for Shana, but I'm sure we can comply with whatever that is.
And I guess the question of this board doing releases because of that situation, Mark, is something that's always been concerned that, you know, we're just signing off on something that everybody else has looked at, whether it's Chris or Jim and sometimes M R B. We're just the final sign off. That's because I guess we required the surety in the first place.
Yeah, it's from approval, right. It is written into your, I mean, Kenley and Farmenton, I think are the only two communities that I, I have forty-five. I think you're the only two that have this authorization comes before the planning board.
Just been asked to that. Who else?
Just gonna ask you that, who what, who else is doing this?
At the time, it was written by the same person. But I I. To make the point, I think there is at times, big projects, they wanna release and you're reviewing maybe. A new phase, not that they should ever implement, but sometimes there's questions that the board.
Yeah.
If you had concerns in the review, initial review, and things were gonna make sure they were installed, and you wanna make sure they were installed before money's released, you know, then I think you should go.
I feel like these smaller ones almost, they they got the 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 procedure, not to extend this conversation, and it has to be, but. The the release process got changed along the way, no longer required MRB to review the ones that are less than twenty thousand dollars, nor authorized a release, because there was deemed. Somewhat insignificant, um it it might not be a bad thing to look at as one of the codes to see if these even require, coming back to the board, Chris approved it. And they signed it, then why not staff just sign it, give it to the fiscal officer, and approve it call it a day, whereas the large ones still come back.
The phase, the phase.
Where we have actual physical signatures that have to be supplied, just a thought.
I agree with that, so.
Would the board be comfortable with that? Yes, so maybe the threshold be twenty thousand.
Yeah, I think it follows your same terminology that you already filed, which is anything less than that is technically deemed a residential.
Yeah.
Site plan component as opposed to a large project, commercial or industrial or fix up.
Well, specifically for this one, it's driveway and launcher. Same amount of twelve thousand four hundred foot, so. If you're okay with releasing that, it was, it's a twelve foot, that's full driveway and installation of thirty thousand square feet of lawn.
I I only can motion for the surety release for, you think CPN one one oh five eight for twelve thousand four forty five.
Okay, motion second.
Second. Amanda. Whoever.
Like the.
Favor the release, say aye, aye. So say no.
For a reminder, I will abstain.
Well, then I will move on to the, are we ready?
Okay, the next release, and I'll give you a little more detail, is from uh Harford, Boyer, thirty five forty eight, County Route sixteen. Applicant is Gold Boyer. Uh it's site stabilization project complete, nor land issued certificate of occupancy, the surety was for erosion certification, controlling the amount of one thousand eighty one dollars. Anyone like to see the documentation? It's here.
So I'll make a motion to release one thousand dollars eighty one. One thousand dollars eighty one. Twenty one zero six seven.
I'll second.
Get the yips when I talk about money.
Did everybody have a vote, okay?
Okay, I have a motion of second again. Same idea, we didn't, nobody voted. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I rushed that, I apologize.
Yeah, that's.
Opposed? We got one extension. Four zero one. Okay, it's the principle, right? Okay. Moving on. Okay, I'm gonna have the referrals of town, of town board. Oh, we got two uh. Okay, so one is the one that you have on in front of you is the edge mirror. And that's the form based code, if you recall, they brought a sketch plan in, uh there was some little bit of confusion as to how that process would flow. I think it was agreed that they go to the ZBA, get their relief from the ZBA, come back to us, and then we would give it. Uh our consideration, then if we think it's worth moving forward, we give it to the town board, town board would look at it, if they think it's worth. Further consideration, we'd come back to us as they say. So we are now at the point where the ZBA.
The ZBA granted their two variances for transparency as well as percent facade in the build two zone. So they were granted their two variances, the plan then is for them to come here. On the night of November, and then they will go to the town board on the twenty first.
So the ninth would be like a recommendation at that point?
Uh town board on the, is it the twenty first, I believe, and then the next night, they would be back here. Goodness. For a site plan. That's the, that's the.
If the board recalls, I think the issue, the biggest issue we had was regarding partner. And I think the applicant made a commitment to provide us studies and analysis. That they had found uh as well as could maybe consider a re redesign of the parking, maybe consider some uh standby parking or. Subside parking or future parking, uh so we haven't seen that yet, so we would expect to see that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think they're waiting for some comments to be provided, which I'm gonna generate uh this week, and then I think, based on my understanding, you would probably likely revise the plans and try to address some comments received.
In the interest of keeping this thing moving, is there anything else the board wanted to see from the applicant that? We tell him now and not weeks of the ninth to tell him?
I brought it up, because he had handicap. Pictures on almost every single room on the second set of plans, wherein I think he owned one or four. Yeah, and then there was only two handicaps.
Only two handicap, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think parking in total, handicap spaces, there's EV parking that they're considering. We had emergency accessibility through their uh fire code compliance, because when you have a two-story building, a certain criteria that has to be met. Uh we're looking at the dumpster location, landscaping was a concern that was raised by the board, HVAC units, where are they being placed, are they being screened? Um they are, I think said just as possible using solar on the roof, or solar to some capacity, uh so the plans didn't really define where that was. Those are some of the additional things outside of the type of tour review, that we were kind of chime in with that.
Yeah.
Pedestrian accessibility, walkability, connectivity to the existing areas, complete streets was brought up, of oh, important sidewalks and so on.
I guess for the ninth, we're still talking generalities, I guess, to some degree, though the parking is a big issue, that's something should get down. We feel comfortable that what they're proposing works, but uh when they come back with the site plan on the twenty second, that's when.
They will, and they will have a site plan on the ninth as well, so.
Maybe we can encourage them to be prepared to talk more about the parking with the board, and I mean, that that's really, that's a big component.
Yeah, I will remind them, I think they are very well aware in that the town board mentions the same, because they were looking at your resolution. So uh they brought it up to the applicant and the town board.
Sure.
Can I, can I ask what was approved?
The only thing that was approved was their variance, variances.
From form base code.
From the form base.
Setback, which they couldn't meet because of easements, and then what was the other one?
No, it wasn't transparency.
Because. Well, Doug did a post, we did a post last week that said, so, so awesome, we got our first approved uptown, uh form based code.
That's not approved yet.
Tell us the words that were chosen to be used.
Uh I can put it on, it says, Vision Humble Beyond Lee, first official approved vote, ten seventeen twenty two relating to form base code. And that, and new affordable housing in the town following the seven year term.
You said affordable housing?
Yeah, there, I mean, I think, I just, I mean, it was a resolution of support.
It's a nice article, I'm just asking, I just. Cause I saw that and that confused me at first.
Yeah.
And then I was looking for stuff in the file.
No, there's no.
It's like, what did I approve, what does, where did that, where did that happen?
Well, I think what threw us off with this whole process was the sketch plan.
Yep.
And then the need for the variance, and there's some, there's a few nuances of the form base code that we need to figure out, and one of them is the variance process and.
Yeah.
The other is the town board, and really, how many times have we asked to do that?
And complete streets.
Right.
Too many, better too many than not, though.
I got, that's what I was saying at this point, I guess.
The complete streets thing is gonna eat us alive in form base code if we don't get a hold of that up there soon.
Yeah.
If we're, if we either stick to it or not.
Well, we, I think we're gonna have to stick with it, with new construction, we can't ask them to do complete streets on Parkside Drive. We can ask for sidewalks, but parkside drive.
So we're only gonna require new roads, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think that at this point.
Couldn't we get.
That makes sense.
I hear what you're saying, I don't, not here to debate, I I think, there's a creative way that we could, we could still meet it, right, there's.
Yes.
There isn't, there hasn't been an authorized design that says, this is the only way to meet complete streets by doing this, 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 there's components to it, sidewalk, bike path, walkway.
Curve, no curve.
That curve, no curve, right, there isn't a street there, maybe there's a way to make improvements without making huge improvements to the road, to your point, repairing up Parkside Drive and putting a road in. Maybe there's a way they could stripe it, maybe there's a way they can put an easement out there, I'm not sure.
I was gonna say, maybe they can do a financial contribution to if and when the town ever.
Maybe exactly, yeah, maybe there's other ways that we can achieve a goal that the town has.
I mean, we force easements for sidewalk.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Yes.
For sure, it's, I won't.
It would just be great if we could figure out what it means to us, I mean, I think we all.
I think you're absolutely right.
Cause other words, if this starts to take off, which we wanted to.
We do.
Then.
Oh, it's funny, because, you know, everything up to, I would say, a year or so ago, complete streets was identified as being this big wide road with all of these components. And then you start thinking about complete streets and for, excuse me, form base code, and it's like, well, we really want the road like this, well then, how do we accommodate? On-street parking, bike path, pedestrian walkability, street or commercial building frontage, and a road, all in there.
Trees.
Hard, and trees and landscape, so. Then we have to have some flexibility.
Yeah. And and there are roads that comes in mainly parking.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a throat in, in.
It is.
And it's just.
Oh, yeah.
Hardly a street.
No.
In reality, it's just.
Think of the math, that's one and a half inches.
Probably pump it.
That's a, it's tight.
It's tight.
Yes.
All right, well. We got a month to dig around.
Point six, is that what it is? Point six three.
Okay, also on the uh the ninth, we're gonna revisit the Rocco's proposal for out on the M U O out on the. Uh Brickyard or uh.
Tomorrow is the deadline, isn't it?
For recent minute.
Yeah.
There was something here supposed to be submitted in town.
Oh, yeah, no, he was.
Oh, yeah.
He was gonna.
No, I wrote that, like, that's.
Oh, I've got it on my desk.
Okay.
He was gonna give us an overall.
Oh, that's due tomorrow, that's Wednesday.
Likelyhood confidence in that, John? Perfect.
So if he doesn't submit it, then it's pushed.
Question, I guess.
December, I think, was like uh the twenty seconds.
So it was referred to you guys by the town board?
Right, you have sixty days.
So there's a timeframe that we have.
A hundred and sixty days, that's right.
Is it sixty or seventy two days?
Sixty, sixty.
For the time that the town board requires.
Yes, that's the middle of November.
Right, so they have sixty days to provide an advisory for it.
Can they get extended? No. I don't know, but I, I, I thought you could, but I don't, I guess I don't truly know the issue, I don't know, yeah. I mean, I guess at this point, you could make a ruling on it and say there is no additional information provided, and then goes back to the town board, and the town board can decide how they want to handle it.
And to that sixty day start.
There's no uh deemed deemed approved.
So if it's the middle.
No, it's not a quasi, you don't do something.
No, yeah, but if your, if your deadline ends before the, after the, does it end after the town board beats November?
Yes, I think that's why we put it on the ninth.
Right, so if they miss the back, then you're likely not gonna meet again before the deadlines do, or before the town board.
No, because the town board is the twenty first. So it has to be the ninth.
So if you missed the ninth.
Well, if we don't have what we need to.
Then you give a fair response and.
It's a safe, we'll just have to go to the, back to the board and say, you know, you don't have the information we need to.
You might wanna ask Chris Naylor, just legally what, what is required versus not.
Submit an advisory board.
I wanna ask him.
So that at night, if we have to make a recommendation of some type.
So maybe there, yeah, there's some sort of action you take, whether it's incomplete.
Right.
I'll ask him.
Yeah, I I admit we're not looking at the details of the site plan, getting into, you know, weeds and all that stuff, but still, I think. I felt, I think the rest of the board felt it'd be nice to see what the, you know, rather than just seeing this piecemeal corner of.
Same big project into the middle.
Well, and also saying that, you know, we need the residential, based on what, I mean, that was a builder that said that.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
Yep. And the issue is industrial versus residential, take away industrial to buy for residential.
So we don't have a whole lot of industrial.
Yep. Okay, so that's also, maybe on the ninth.
Maybe, uh also maybe on the ninth, possibly Sunset Ridge.
Oh.
Asking to amend the conditions of.
For. I think there was.
So there, there are, you, they submitted a letter, uh and there are a few conditions of their approval that they would like the board to reconsider. The timing. Of, one is the. Fact that. Uh the highway agreement has to be executed before they can move on to final.
We can.
Before we can even sign.
Before you reconsider, right, so the condition says the preliminary overall plan. In order to be signed by all parties, the highway agreement has to be signed by both municipalities. They're asking for that condition to be uh amended and do it at, is it final?
You think they had some suggestions?
Yeah, they have some suggestions.
We thought, if the board was to consider, it would be probably attached to final.
Right.
Prior to final signature.
Signature.
Right.
Yes.
But there's, I mean, we did meet with highway superintendents on this, sounds like there is agreement that's, there isn't one currently established. But the conversation is, yeah, we're amenable to this, we just needed a agreement to approve, I think the town was working with the town attorney to figure out, maybe there's a method that they can incorporate. Uh town creating the the mechanism and then presenting that to to municipalities for approval. But in either case, depending on whatever comes before you, whenever the board decides, it's at least my opinion that has to be done before final approval can be granted. Just because if there is no agreement, for whatever that reason is, then that upper area would definitely change.
Right.
Likely change.
Yep.
So it it makes sense that, I can, I can understand why they would wanna push it up, because it may take some time to get an agreement in place. But nonetheless, there was concerns that they may not get one, but through conversations, it sounds like it's through the two municipalities, it sounds like it's much more.
So what, what's taking the time to get the agreement?
There isn't an existing.
Document.
Template.
Templates, and what, and also language, i.e. what should be in the agreement? Where the two roads meet, I know that Hopewell will be using Canada Egg was road standard, uh what happens with maintenance?
Yeah, the whole road, half road, gutters.
The whole road, half road, who plows first? Or who's gonna plow, Hopewell gets there first, are they gonna go all the way to?
It's like a, it's a game, so whoever gets their first plows, that's kinda how, you do this one, I do the next one.
Right. Yeah.
So they need to find a way to clean that up, and being that it's kind of been a while since they've had a real one rule agreement in place. The applicant does they have one, I guess, and I'm not speaking for them, but, yeah, produced one, so. Through conversations, it sounds like the town is working towards a different approach to get that agreement, and that, that's what's gonna be presented to you, that's one.
Yeah, but we will have a detailed. File for you to look at before you're blindsided on the ninth.
The other one was like the maintenance agreement for the common open space area, Chris said he wanted to finalize version, their suggestion is they have a draft of one, would that work for now with the final version? Being provided with each subsequent section, um to go over how that would be maintained.
Uh the A J O D X.
And then the other one was like easements, you don't need easements, it's not part of preliminary, you need them really as part of final.
There wasn't any substantive significant things that they passed.
I think there's only the three.
Our question is, what advantage does it, does the applicant have, and I mean, he's signed preliminary, if they can't get.
You file.
Signed final.
You can file the preliminary.
I mean, financing, can they get financing?
So, as you're standing, right, you have a, an approved project that, that, that you all tied to, like storm going, everything's tied to a, a preliminary approval. So as you're standing, right, you have a, an approved project that 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 you all tied to, like storm going, everything tied to a preliminary approval. Without it, you have nothing, with it, you have a base that everything else is then has to adhere to. Like when a final plan comes to you guys, you're approving that final plan based on the fact that substantially conforming to the preliminary.
Okay, well, they've got good reasons, that's all. And knock our socks off, right? It isn't what it was, and I I think a lot of time has been lost since that approval and now. The negotiations were sort of dormant for a while, so now all of a sudden, there's a fire to get things going.
Well, because their plans are gonna expire, or their approval expires.
They have to do extensions from.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on them, okay, uh we also have on the ninth, two referrals from town board regarding the S B O amendment. And the incentive zone.
Correct.
You folks remember seeing a email from Shawna that had two drafts, one for the S B O amendment. One for the incentive zoning, um.
Sure.
Do you wanna just briefly go over what the provisions are?
Sure. The seat if you should overlay amendment is a a very minor change that states. That the underlying zone. Doesn't basically get, I don't know how to explain this, doesn't get wiped away, that it's still, that it's applicable, whatever is more restrictive is applicable, that's really it, it cleans that up. Uh which is mirrors our entire ordinance, the incentive zoning. Which we already have in the town, this this change is that it would be allowed in any zone in the town of Canada Egg.
Where's it currently?
I don't know which zones it is, yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. Um and then.
All zoning districts.
It would be all zoning districts, and then there would be ma- uh other mechanisms that the town would accept as incentives. Other. It kind of opens it up for the town board to have a lot of discretion, I would say.
I think since this board has not actively done any incentive zoning. Maybe a little bit of a tutorial on incentive zoning.
Yeah, I know what it means and.
I've done a lot.
What it's about, this is what I wrote right here, it's like.
It's very.
Right. Portion, yeah. Yeah, we can, we can do that absolutely, it's just what it means, what it is.
Yeah, that's creative.
It is, it is creative.
It's sort of like the form base. That you can still propose whatever you want.
It is, and it's.
Probably more like a pod.
It is, it it, you could take a piece of, let's, yeah, actually, we could talk about German brothers. So if if we were to do incentive zoning on a parcel like that. Where German brothers is, it basically, the applicant says, listen, I would like to do. I wanna do a restaurant, this and that, I wanna, I wanna, I want decreased setbacks, more coverage. I really wanna just do that, I have this plan, this vision, and the town says, okay, sure.
In return, I will.
Yeah, we, you can do that, but you're gonna give us.
It's a negotiation.
And it's a little bit, you know, it's.
I don't know, is that?
No, you're not wrong either.
Yeah.
It it's like, you're only allowed five acre lots on this particular property. The incentive would be, I wanna reduce that so I can get double the amount of lots, otherwise permitted, I wanna reduce it so that I can get more residential lots. On here, I can prove that I can serve it with utilities, but the the benefit to the community is I'm providing this trail network, these sidewalk connectivities, complete streets. Oversized water main service, and then future use, right? It's their job to demonstrate how they're they're benefiting the community with some of these upgrades. But the way it is, is basically it's a blank canvas, right, and they're allowed to present something that ultimately has to go to the town board to vet out. And the town board then refers it to all their boards for review and recommendation.
How are they?
Does it quite a bit.
How are they held to that? They're making promises, we're saying.
So those would be, so the town board, it's a rezoning, so it has to get rezoned by the town board first, and the town board would set the standards for you guys.
Okay.
And for them, it would be like, okay, this many uses, this type of setback, that's why I said pod, cause it's kind of similar, like. A pod, you go with a blank canvas and they, they say you have to meet this minimum criteria, they meet it, and then it comes to you individually planned out from there. Here would be kind of similar, they would discuss the amenities, condition them on approving those amenities at whatever stage in the process, and then they come to you for final approval. It gets complicated, sometimes gets convoluted because I've been talking to some other communities about, you know, incentive zoning isn't always. Favorite way, cause it just seems awkward at times.
We have not.
But there should be a way to percentage, like make a percentage, like, hey, if you do this type of a project, then there's a certain minimum percentage of improvements. That you're required to make to meet it, as opposed to this endless dollar amount of, hey, here's a million dollars to use towards whatever.
Farmington is doing, you make fifty percent of the residences.
Except that, I mean, that's.
So that, that would be the incentive, you're getting affordable housing back in return for a higher density.
Yeah.
It's negotiated zone, it's essentially.
Yes.
I don't know whether or not there's a communicative benefit to it or.
So I guess this this amendment is, as Shawna said, is just to allow incentive zoning to apply anywhere in town, so.
I don't know if they, I don't know if they've talked to somebody that has an idea or not, but.
If there's a reason why they.
It's never been applied in the.
The last one, I think, was um the Villas at Canada Egg.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I think that was the last incentive zoning.
Yeah, incentive zoning, they got the trail, they got the. Some things in return, okay, so that's on the ninth, so we've got edge mirror. Uh town board, board, uh town board referrals for S B O incentive, we've got edge, uh edge, what about, we got the Rocko. And we have, may have uptown. Uh point one two.
We might.
That's the industrial buildings, you're going Brickyard. Just the one one. So that's the ninth, uh training. Any of you folks still have to clean up some hours, there's a workshop on the third of November at Delago. Take some money with you.
I'm taking like two solar classes this November.
That's right. Uh November, yeah, that's the uh Terry County.
The five.
And and the New Year, playing Federation is Zoom, I'm gonna ours coming up on the.
Chuck and Bob back on the training, if you guys see stuff that's good for like civil engineering. Getting a little tired of some of the political stuff. So it'd be great to actually get in some.
Okay, if you see it.
Oh, I'll write those coattails speaking as someone that's having that background.
And as far as our hours, uh we're all, we've got the spreadsheet screened out, uh I think the last time we looked at it, just. Couple of things that would be added on the counted for, I think everybody has their requirements, so we're. Going into New Year clean. Okay. Clean and green. Alright, anybody else have anything?
For Shawna, I I didn't wanna bring it up in public, that are we gonna change the permit applications? I looked at it, but they need to have that zone or the scenic view shed, is your property in scenic view shed? If so.
Are we talking site plan?
Your cycling and zoning applications don't have anything about the rivers or the stream setbacks, anything like that, can we change those?
Yeah, so we, I don't know if everybody is aware, but the town has a contract with a a new company called Cloud Permit. And it's all all online permitting, so we've made it through the test phase for building permits. Where everyone will be, we're doing it for all the applicants, what we're putting everything electronically. In the cloud, um but I just started. This week with Cloud Permit, we're gonna be switching all of our site plans, special use permits, everything over, so we're looking at, so yes. We're looking at each application, ways to simplify, I think that we can simplify checklist, and also there's things that we need to add, especially the N R I. So ultimately, down the road, I'm not sure when yet, our timeline is still kind of in flux, but you will be able to go, you, the board will be able to go into Cloud Permit. Find everything you need. Electronically, similar to the what we have now, but probably much more user friendly. But yeah, so the answer, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Who else? If not.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven twenty.
All favor?
Nobody oppose?
Want to abstain?
Ozzy has gotta stay.